My clock says at six o'clock, so I call the Board of Pet Select meeting to order for Monday, June 13th, I can't believe that, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Do I have anybody that will wave the zoom?
Zoom.
Second. Roll call.
Clock eye.
Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Waitman eye.
Benoid eye. And if you could do the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion approved, Treasury Warrant 22W-25 and Payroll 22PW-25. Second.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Galvin eye.
Nichols eye excluding COA wages.
Waitman eye.
Benoid eye.
Motion approved, minutes of May 21st, 2022, and minutes, May, no, but everyone has.
Yeah, we have to do one at a time.
Waitman seconds.
This is May 21st.
May 21st.
Yep. Clock eye, I mean, yeah.
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye.
You can't, you and this young man can't.
Oh, this was that one.
The 31st was, the 21st was that Saturday meeting.
I make a motion to approve minutes, uh, May 31st, 2020.
Waitman seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Waitman eye.
Benoid eye. I was have to withstand. See, I'm just, I'm out of order here, completely.
You're more out of order.
I'm all out of order. Thank you. Upstand. Anybody here for public comment?
Yes.
Stand and state your name or your address.
So there's something on the docket tonight, um, related to the VASUCON project. Is this the proper time to talk about it or not?
It's from Marty's.
No, we're going to do that during the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. And that will be next. Jeff, did you want to?
No, I'm here in case you had any questions about this weekend's activity.
Um, so if we can, we'll do that at this point, so this weekend, um, June 18th, we'll have an all-day affair to kick off, solidly kick off the 300th. I don't know that we need to run through the events, I think everybody has seen them, but I think what I'd like to know is what do you want from the board and where should we be at what appointed time?
Okay, so I, Jeff Stelling's three Lord Lane, so I had sent the chair a draft agenda for the day, timeline of events for the day, but more specifically for our 300th proclamation, which is going to be 10 o'clock till maybe 10:45. And I outlined in the syllabus, uh, the dignitaries that'll be up on the stage, hopefully the bandstand, which would be you all, the board. What you guys can decide, I have everything laid out, the proclamation, and as I said, you guys can stand while we read the proclamation, uh, and then we can have a member of the board do the countdown with the cannons, of course. That, I think that'd be great, that'd be sufficient. The others, if they want to say something, keep it brief because we only have 45 minutes. You're most welcome to say something if you wanted to, but I don't think it's necessary. If you don't feel comfortable, it's fine. It's going to be a brief event, and if you guys had anything that you wanted to be included, I mean, it's a draft, happy to adjust it. So, but what you see is we have a full slate of dignitaries on there, we've got a couple color guards, we've got cannon crews, we've got some muskets, we've got the permits for the same. I think it'll be fun. And that's it. Been working with the chair and the town administrator as we went along on the proclamations, and thank you for your tweaks on that. Uh, we'll have that joint proclamation on a scroll, the idea is that everyone can sign that, and then we'll put that in the time capsule in the fall. I also prepared a town plaque with the keys to the mayor Marietta and to the people of Marietta, and we could do the signing plaque like we like to with the gold pen, all of you, and then, uh, you know, the officials there, and then we give that to the mayor. We have some gifts for the dignitaries, uh, tricentennial wine that Rich Stevens made with Rutland peaches, and he branded it with the tricentennial label on there. And then I have fancy keys, which I got from the Hudson Flea Market, painted nicely with the maroon ribbon. So we'll have that on for anybody who's a speaker up there, we'll have something to present them. And then the ladies at the 300th are putting together a gift basket to give back to the people of Marietta. So if you guys had a something Rutland specific trinket that you want to include in the basket, I think that would be neat. And, and that's what we got planned for now, so. And you know how to reach me, uh, it's fluid, but it's going to be a good day.
Okay. The chairs, the bunting, all of those things you.
Yep, the chairs we're going to get from Rutland Historical, uh, the podium we borrow from Seth. I have the bunting that goes on top. The biggest thing that you guys can do, and then you are, is getting, getting us a place to do it, i.e. the gazebo, uh, at least a, a solid platform that we can kick off on, and we'll make the rest work, you know? Work with Rutland Nurseries to get the sod laid around there, they said that they would provide that. I think, you know, at the very least, we'll be good to go on that. Like everything, it's a slide to the plate, you know? Everything's less, right down to the wire, but that's how we roll there at Rutland.
And just because I was traveling recently, we want to be aware of the gift baskets and what they can bring. I'm, I'm pretty sure for a couple of days they're not checking luggage, so I'll be carry-on, so you've got to be careful of liquids.
Oh, yeah. Well, we weren't prepared to mail it back if we had to.
Good.
You know, so we talked about that.
Great.
Or you can drink it while it's here.
Yeah.
You know, Rutland peaches.
You can have.
And also, I think you are in the loop, but the following day, the 19th, I, I think the biggest, biggest dignitary we have is the mayor Marietta, who's coming out here specifically for it. The 300th committee are going to use through its raffle funds to pay for his lodging at the Rufus Putnam House, which is good. The 19th, uh, the Woo Socks are playing the Toledo, Ohio Mudheads, which is the Detroit Tigers minor league team. So I have confirmation that the mayor is going to throw out the first pitch. I drafted a, a narrative for the announcer to read about our nexus with Marietta, why it's our sister city, and we're happy to welcome, along with Worcester's tricentennial, which is happening around the same time. You know, Rutland and Worcester are almost, we were vying for the county seat, if it wasn't Worcester, it was going to be Rutland, so we incorporated at the same time. But a narrative of, of Marietta, or why they're important to us, and that he's going to throw it out, we're going to sit, uh, there's 25 of us so far, I can get more tickets, uh, if you'd like, but I need to know. And we're going to sit right behind the Ohio team in there, so he can go and welcome himself to them. I think it'll be, make him feel very special, and then he flies back on Monday. Okay? The other thing that members of the board could do, if you're so inclined, is, uh, we're going to have a, a space to, to entertain him on Saturday after the muster, whether it be at the Senate Tree, we're going to Lilac Hedge, or the Milk Room, to give him some direction of something to do, that would be a, a place for you all. So that he has a full welcoming weekend, and I, I think that will, the Sunday game is at 1:00 o'clock, so I think that'll fit in nicely. I think we did justice to, to our sister city that way.
I, I, it's amazing. Your work is always amazing, so.
It'll be fun.
Yeah. Great.
Through the chair, I just want to thank Jeff, because I mean, this is a lot of work, and as usual, he's done a fantastic job. Maybe we could look at some progressive thing between the Milk Room and Lilac Hedge or something like apps and, you know what I mean, to try to include them all or something like that, if there's time, but.
Well, it's a little close to the event, I know Lilac Hedge has something specific with the fire brigade, they're all going back there, so there's a band of music. So that would be a logical place to go, the Milk Room has their regular operations going on, so, uh.
Just to try to be as inclusive of, of the different, you know, places in town would be nice, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think Lilac would probably be the go-to because the brigade is there. But, you know, I don't know how he may be exhausted, I don't know. But, uh, that'd be a place for the town representatives to step up and do that.
It wouldn't look good if he slept through the baseball game.
That's right. That's right, so.
But thank you, I appreciate all your work.
Yep. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jeff. Cory?
Through the chair, uh, Jeff, Mr. Stelling, um, just want to make sure that, um, and I, I see the only thing here, I have a question about, one of them anyway, is that, are the chairs, will they be set up, or you need assistance setting them up?
Um, the 300th, we'll set them up, the, um, they, Historical Society has a, has a good supply of folding chairs, so we're just going to get a pickup truck, and I'm talking, uh, you saw the list of VIPs that we anticipated on the bandstand, that's 15 maybe, or less, and then probably two rows of, two or three rows of 10 in there. But people should bring their own, but it's going to be a short ceremony too.
Okay, and another part of the question, more important actually, is on part of my update, so I'll have to go out of order for a second, if I may. Because I, I believe you said, because the floor is poured, the concrete was placed, as you know, Friday, that, that is okay, that you'll use it like that, even if it's not in the completed stage. So just to let you know, and I did talk to a couple members of the board last week, I have solicited, um, to rent a portable stage, um, 16 by 16. I have not secured it, I have not put anything in writing yet because I'm waiting for prices. So from what you said, I believe that's not necessary?
Well, it's your call, I, I think we go with what we got. They said they're going to be swinging hammers, hired for four days, I saw that email from Mr. Blair. I think they're going to have a good chunk of it. I mean, I don't expect that they're going to have, that they're going to have a duplicate roof to the community hall, I don't expect that that's going to be on there, but it is what it is. I think as long as we have a, a decent level platform, and you sod around so that it doesn't look like it's under construction, we can go with that, uh, you know?
Okay, any thoughts?
But it's your call.
Yeah, through the chair, so how high is it off the ground? I mean, is there any?
Inches.
It is, okay, so it's not a height, I mean, I, I haven't seen it since it's been poured, so. Okay. I just was, want to make sure nobody could go off the edge of it.
No, it's an ADA, uh, specific, you'll notice that the ADA ramp from, the driveway is going to be almost level, pretty much level, right on there. Yeah, there'll be no falling, but it's just the aesthetics, I think, right now, let's see what they can do. They said they're going to work real hard for the next three days.
And I, and I got pretty good faith in them, because I did have a meeting with Mr. Blair last week, but I'm just concerned to have, uh, a backup plan in case all else fails. So if the board is okay with, uh, Mr. Stelling's just using the platform, and you do not want me to pursue rental of a stage?
If, if, do you have a cost? Because I know when we had talked last week, it was potential rental and/or, uh, or purchasing, outright purchasing, that then would be foldable, that could be used throughout town if we wanted to do something over at, um, down at the library, or any place we could have that option. Um, but do you ha- have pricing, even ballpark pricing?
For, for purchase, they go anywhere from three to five.
Hundred or thousand?
Thousand. The rentals, they have not conferred and sent me back a price of what it would cost, because it would have to be a Friday setup for an all-day use on, um, Saturday, and knock down either Sunday or Monday.
Right.
So I'm waiting for those, I did send out a couple of requests today.
And do you have any idea where the money would come from?
I do not.
Okay, if we were to go with either the rental or the purchasing?
I do not.
Okay.
The rental, I was going to actually talk to the 300th committee about that, to see if, if, worst case, and we could not use the floor or any part of gazebo, then I was going to talk to them about it, but.
Well, that's an easy solution right there, because we have no money.
I guess my other concern is if there's construction material still on the common, because I know that they've been bringing them as they kind of receive it, so that they can take it and just get construction going, if those construction materials are still there, and they're trying to place a stage also, and everything, so I guess it's a lot of unknown, like how, how clean the common is going to look, um, and how the week goes.
It would be, but I think in last minute, we'd be able to just for truck those existing materials out of there for the time being, but I believe their intent is to work on it all day Friday and get it done. That's their intent, and they got a good, good.
It's four hour days. If I, if I could speak, if I was in your place, Gary, I would go with it. I wouldn't go with the, uh, the stage, because first of all, we just don't have $3,000 to $5,000. Uh, we don't, town doesn't have that. I think you can do a lot, even if you did half of it, you could do a lot with bunting around it, and nobody would know. Look what we do, you know, all those concerts are done on Randy Jordan's flatbed, you know? And from the back, it looks like a flatbed, but from the front, if you dress it up, lipstick on a pig, right? Nobody complains, and we have fun, put the lights on there, so. And that's part of what Rutland is too, you know, it doesn't have to be the Taj Mahal, I mean.
Okay.
So.
So to the board, then I would like to, um, to look into that for future, you, Shinnon will discuss that in a later meeting, for the possibility of purchase of a portable stage.
We might look at the, uh, the FEMA money for those purposes, uh, through the chair again. So the tent that we, we display at these Friday events, that's town, a town tent that was purchased through the FEMA money. I think there's another one, probably a council and agent. Something like that might fall into those auspices, and that would be a good use for, if you could. But otherwise, you know what? We'll go with it.
Okay, very good, so. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, you keep up the good work, thank you.
Um, so next is public hearing, so, help me here.
You just open it up.
Sorry. Call the, um, public meeting open at 6:15 PM. And we're here to hear about Marty's Convenience Store, LLC, at 529 East County Road, and they're asking for a liquor license for the sale of wine and malt beverages for off, off-premise conception. So retail store.
I'm Allison Mastervito, I am the owner of it, and I'm just looking for approval for the beer and wine license. It's the same, um, structure and everything that the VASUCON had, and we're looking for the exact same permits.
Great. And you were here for public?
Uh, Jake Cuttis, 240 Palmer Gussett Road. Uh, I've known Allison for 25 years, uh, we grew up together, and I'm just basically here just kind of like as a character with, witness to her integrity, she's kept her nose clean her whole life, she's got two young daughters. She's trying to make something of it, I think that it's a positive thing for Rutland to get more business. Um, I also know that in order for her business to be, uh, profit positive and for it to get up off the ground, it's something that should happen, um, it's something that was already in place before, so I mean, it's, I don't really feel, in my non-opinion, that doesn't matter, um, that I think that it should happen, and I'm just basically here to support it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any pros or cons, or?
I think it's, if I may, I think it's great that you guys are doing something. I know it's been empty for a little while, and a lot of people miss it, you know, especially doing that commute up 68, you know, there's not a lot on that stretch. I appreciate you going out and, and doing it, and trying to make the most of it, so.
Thank you.
Um, and I know that they, the VASUCON also had the same license, so I think it makes sense, um, location-wise, with out there and everything, you know, people coming into camp and everything, prevents people from driving all over town, that they might want to pick up a six-pack for the weekend or whatever, so, um, thank you, I appreciate it.
Through the chair, I'd like to say thank you as well. I mean, one of the reasons I get involved with this is to try to get business, encourage business to come into town, so I think it's great.
Just through the chair, can we get, how many licenses do we have? Do we know where we're at? Do we have a certain number?
Um, so for off-premise, I believe we have, uh, four remaining, and for on-premise, I believe we have two remaining.
So we have plenty, plenty of?
We have plenty, yes. We actually just got the numbers from the ABCC last week to make sure that we have the updated numbers, and we do.
Thank you. And, and thank you as well, and best of luck, assuming we approve it. I make a motion.
Oh, sorry, I just have one other, Seth, did you have any, as public safety, any comments or questions or anything? I know public safety isn't usually here for, always here for.
Um, so we did all our inspections during the transfer sale, um, so once they go through the, uh, Board of Health permitting process, then we'll get back involved when they're ready to open.
All right.
No problems.
Thank you.
When are you looking to open?
July 1st, I mean, the Board, the Board of Health actually, he issued those permits already, so we should be good.
Awesome, congratulations.
The sign's been out a while, so we've been waiting.
Well, yeah.
Has it, I, I was, I thought it went through like three, three or four weeks ago, and it hadn't been up yet, but.
There's just a "coming soon" sign on it, so the signage itself still says VASUCON, it doesn't say Marty's yet, but it should soon.
Wonderful, wonderful. Anybody else speak real close?
Just Dick Williams, I just want to say congratulations and best of luck for you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Another woman on, woman on business.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Waitman eye.
Benoid eye.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the license for Marty's Convenience Store at 529 East County Road.
Second.
Roll call.
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Waitman eye.
Benoid eye.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You'll all be good.
Thank you, guys.
Let us know when you really do open.
Good timing, July 1st, we'll be plenty of people around, be ready.
So Allison, I'll reach back out to you, because now that the board has approved it, now it goes to the ABCC, so they still have to issue their license, um, so I'll be in touch with you to coordinate that.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go, whichever you'd like to do. Um, next we'll move to the department head meetings, and she's Seth Knight, do you want to update us?
Sure. Again, this is just a follow-up, I was here back in April, giving our first quarter. Uh, now we're kind of finishing halfway point, uh, through the year. Uh, just want to give you some updates on the FEMA reimbursement stuff. Uh, when I spoke back in April, our CARES funding, um, through the executive office, administrative finance, we've done the reconciliation piece, um, that's in final review at the state level. Once that clears to state level, then it will move on to FEMA, and then FEMA will release the portion of that as well. So our hope is to get that account back to zero by the end of the fiscal year, so that doesn't carry over to next year. Um, as you know, we held the, uh, regional FEMA clinic, uh, that was 100% paid through FEMA funding. As you know, we did two separate rounds, uh, we did January through August of last year. Uh, we closed that out, and we kind of took some short time off over the summer. That round was closed, all documentation was submitted, we just received $124,000, 100% of that first round today. Uh, so that came into town today. Um, as you know, we opened back up, uh, in September, and we ran through March of this year, uh, where we started, uh, doing boosters and, uh, once the kids became eligible, uh, so we got that done. All that paperwork has been submitted as well, um, that's in the initial review, uh, phase, and we look to get that closed out relatively quickly as well. On calls for service for the departments, uh, here we are coming at the end of June. Our call numbers go calendar year, not fiscal year, so, uh, for this time, over last year to now, uh, we're at 12% over, uh, calls, uh, for service, uh, for the first half of the year. Uh, it's been kind of interesting, um, we're seeing a lot of medical calls, but in the last, since I was here in April, burning season went through May, and we had no brush fires at all from January through May during normal burning season. But after May 1st, we were just running all over town with brush fires, um, just due to the dry weather, um, and the delay of everything greening up, um, because it was so cold, it was such a cold spring. Uh, so we've been chasing fires all over town. As you know, uh, I spoke back in, uh, April about, uh, department budget issues. As you know, I'm here in front of you this evening, um, as I said, that I would be in for a transfer, uh, to cover some of the shortages. Interesting thing to point out is when we budget year ambulance revenue, uh, we pick a number that we feel is comfortable, and that we base, we pay a 5% fee on our collection of what we collect, uh, from a third-party billing company. So if it's $500,000, we estimate 5% of that, and that's what gets into the line item budget. This year, our ambulance revenue is going to be in excess of, close to $600,000. So we didn't budget for repaying the billing company more money, so that's why you see such a large deficit in that account. So we're trying to get that squared away. Why we had surplus in wages is that we had a vacancy, um, as you know, um, as I spoke last month, Dan Harris, who's been with us since 2013, um, left us, uh, early May. Uh, he went back to his original hometown department, where he became a full-time firefighter way, way back. Um, he's been hired as the captain in charge of fire prevention, uh, so he's over in the town of Shirley. Uh, we also just found out recently that we'll be losing another full-time firefighter to the town of Sterling. Uh, she will be leaving in early July. Uh, but during this whole, um, last two months, we've sent out, um, whole job postings, we've started getting applications in, we just finished the interview process last week, and now that we potentially have two vacancies, we'll be placing offers out the next week or so to have them start early July. Um, on happier news, um, I've been told I can retire in September of 2025. Not that I intend to, but I just want to put that on everyone's radar. I currently have no desire to retire at this time, because my wife won't let me. But it just kind of puts a clear light in perspective of what I would like to do over the next, you know, five to seven years. And one of it is succession planning. As you know, the last two years during the pandemic, I held two roles as fire chief and emergency management director. And in two years, I worked over 700 hours above and beyond my 40-hour a week, doing emergency management stuff, handling the pandemic issues, and doing all the state and federal reporting for the CARES funding and the FEMA reimbursement. It is quite obvious that during that time, um, I needed additional support staff, um, or staff outside the union that can help me manage the, uh, department at a more higher level. As you can tell, our call volume is increasing so dramatically that the full-time staff, they can do six to seven ambulance calls a day, they'll leave in the morning, and I will not see them all day. Uh, because by the time they're coming back, they go to the next one, and it's back to the city. Um, so it's become very difficult for me to handle and stay up on everything that needs to get done. Um, so my goal in the next year or two is if I could get one additional staff person at an upper level out of the union position to help me manage, um, not only emergency management piece, but all the residential and commercial inspections, um, and just day-to-day department operations. That's pretty much it. Uh, as you know, we've got kind of a, um, the fire brigade is putting on the 95th Annual Watch Uset Muster, uh, will be held here in town, uh, worked out really well, that just happened, that it's Rutland Stern to host it. Um, and it coincides with the town's Founder's Day, so it, uh, should be a great day, the weather looks pretty decent. Um, and hopefully you come out and enjoy, and, uh, that's it.
Thank you. I recall when you were talking about the emergency management plan, and we looked at it, reviewed it, and signed off on it, that somebody stepping into, potentially stepping in, I mean, you've, you've laid the groundwork on that already, so it's just updating it, so, um, I, I didn't say that in the last meeting, but I thank you for that, and I recognize that you've done all the heavy lifting. I do have a question about, when you talked about ambulance and going into the city, I recalled a, uh, prior meeting, maybe the April meeting that you were at, that there was a lag time with how long they were, um, they were spending at.
Yep.
Emergencies, has that?
It has gotten better, because, you know, as the COVID cases come down, they're releasing space within the hospital, so, you know, before we would bring a patient to the hospital, we could be waiting with a patient on our stretcher for up to two hours before we could transfer the patient into hospital care. Um, bed status has improved inside the hospital, so we're able to get that, um, facilitate that much quicker. And we're also branching out and traveling to some of our regional partners, or regional hospitals, smaller hospitals for non-life-threatening emergencies that could get handled at that, at that level, at a much faster pace, uh, so we've been dealing with that. Um, so it's been working out, may have to travel a little bit further, but in, in reality, it's actually saving us some time, so.
Um, and just curious, one more thing, um, the brush fires past the May, were any of them associated with, um, maybe burning where we weren't supposed to without permit?
So, no, uh, actually, we don't really have a huge, you know, people like to have, you know, cooking fires and things like that, and, you know, my, my feeling is, as long as you don't upset your neighbor and smoke out the neighborhood and do what's happy, I don't really care. Uh, just use good common sense. Um, but I think now that the weather's getting better, a lot of people are outside, they're becoming more active, they're out on the trails, and whether it is smoking or whatever, drop a cigarette, um, and that's pretty much, we've had a lot of fires around a lot of ponds, um, so kids are out. So schools out this week.
Through the, through the chair, Seth, do they have any management through the, the woods? Because I know a lot of times when there's a lot of downed trees, they try to keep that cleaned up so there isn't as much?
Yeah, so, uh, DCR, um, tries to keep, at least keep the roadways open for us, um, and then there's, they're doing a lot of forestry cutting, um, especially in the, uh, state park area and up through the prison. And then they're doing a lot of forestry cutting, especially in the state park area and up through the prison camps, all the way to the Berry side. Army Corps of Engineers property, they do a lot of.
So they do a lot of removal of downed trees and stuff?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. And just through the chair, another quick question. When you're talking about the upper level, is there a ranking? Like what kind of ranking with that upper?
Well, as you know, my deputy chief called Deputy Williams retired back in December.
So it'd be at that position?
It would be something in that rank.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
I was the last person to hold the rank of full-time deputy. And then when I got promoted, that position was never filled. And that position was taken out of the union several contracts ago, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Through the chair. Just to say Seth, because you've announced your retirement, so I mean, make any definite plans after that because, you know, you never know, some people come back.
Like a bad penny.
Well, maybe some won't. Through the chair.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Seth for everything you do. You know, it's been a crazy couple of years and that's one of the conversations I know we've been trying to have as far as just that emergency management piece, as nobody envisions that position being a two-plus-year pandemic position and how much strain that put on you personally and the department as a whole because it's been rough. So thank you.
Through the chair, if I may introduce the next.
Please do.
So I don't believe all of you have met her yet.
Correct.
Thank you. Again, through the chair, our next department head update is Jean Joel, our new town accountant. I don't know if any of you have met her yet, but I just want to introduce her to the board. So this is Jean Joel. We did have a very productive, successful interview process with Jean. She is, and I'm very confident that she's more than competent, very easy to work with and certainly knows her stuff in a manner of speaking. So I thank you. Welcome to Rotten. And now be ready for your first department head update.
What a way to start.
Hi Jean, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
So tell us about your first few weeks, a week or however.
Two, yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks.
It's been really good. I mean, I know the software. I've had a lot of years on that software, so I'm good to go on that. And every town is a little bit different. Every town's the same. County is the same when I went down there. Becky Town has been great. I know Becky for a long time, so it's great too. So she can help me. Gary's been really great too. So we're moving right along. It's just a matter of me getting used to your accounts. And when I do that, then I'll have a better head of what's going on and meeting. I've met a lot of the, either I've met all the department heads now.
There's a few you have left, but the plan is to, with the next department head meeting, you'll certainly be there.
Yeah. So I'm hoping to work with them and, you know, pick their brains and find out what's going on. And I guess once I have a better understanding of the whole town, you know, I'll be able to help a lot more.
And is Dan still on speed dial?
Yes, he is, yes, he is, yes, he is. I was texting him today. Because we do things a little bit differently with the warrant, so I was texting him and he, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, he's still, there's a couple of other things he's going to clean up for me that happened at town meeting that I don't fully understand. He's going to come in and finish, fix that for me first, so.
Great, great.
He's on speed dial, he's been on speed dial for a long time.
Came highly recommended through both him and Becky, so.
Thank you.
Looking forward to having you on board and anytime you need anything, let us know.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes, please.
I think I heard, or in the introduction email, that your general, your plan is to be in town hall on Mondays? Is that the current?
Yes. That's what I've been doing on Mondays. Because I have Mondays off from my, I work in town of Barry too.
Okay.
So I have Mondays off and when Monday's a holiday, I have Tuesday off for Barry, so I'll be here on Tuesdays. So I'll always be here one day a week.
Great.
Thank you.
And I know that Gary is working diligently on changing the department head meetings as he just alluded to, to Mondays, so that Jean can be a part of those, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary, for thinking of that.
And through the chair too. Just a quick question. In preparing the warrants, I know that sometimes, Dan, if there was something questionable or something we might want to take a look at, we'd kind of tag it. I don't know if you have any kind of method or how you would want to bring anything to the board's attention or to the chair's attention or?
I certainly can do that too.
I mean, whatever, I don't, I don't want to tell you, but how to do it. I'm just curious if you had a method.
Either that or to the town administrator and then he can advise me as if there's something that the board would be, you know, wanted more to look at or something. Because if bills come in to me, I assume that they've been to where they're supposed to be, you know, before I put them on the warrant. I have to assume that, but yeah, that's not a problem.
But I guess to just piggyback on what Lyndon said, it's if something, even if it's, if it's not, I don't think this is right, but I think they should know about maybe excess spending or. And we've, we've learned the hard way through, you know, there's a lot of, especially we'll see in July, we'll see a lot of one-time spending, so the budget goes down to, you know, zero on that in a matter of one pay.
Right.
So any, doors are always open.
Yeah, it's a little tough coming in this time of year too because all those budgets are getting really low, so it's like.
Yeah. Well, the two of you be really close on that.
Yeah.
Oh, don't look at me like that.
So we got to introduce them that end down there, so.
So I didn't know who, I've been gone. I've been, I've been away for the two weeks, so I don't know who you've met, but please go ahead.
I'm Leah Whitman. I haven't been up yet. I am not usually up all the time and Mondays are tough for me, but I'll try to make an effort to stop it. And I'm always available by email, so by no means. And I think Gary has my cell phone number, which is always an option also.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm Lyndon Nichols. I'm always available as well through email or through text or through myself.
Great.
Thank you, welcome.
Tom Galvin, I was just recently elected. Feel free to reach out to me anytime.
Skip Clark, you know I'm the crabby one.
I met you today.
You today?
Yep, she did. She got you here for it too.
Carol Benoit, and I'm stumbling through my first chair meeting, so forgive the stumbling.
She tried to leave the country, but it didn't work.
I tried to leave the country, they brought me back. But anyway, thank you.
And Tamika, have you ever?
Oh, Tamika, you did?
Oh, I didn't meet you.
Yes, we haven't, might get just the email, yes.
Tamika has, we should only see her on Mondays and some of us only see her on Mondays, but she's started working in our office part-time, so. I've already seen that there's more conversation with people, so.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Well, that's, that's that. And you're welcome to stay for more or you can.
Welcome to leave.
She met Skip.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
And sound administrator update.
Okay, I have just a few things that we've talked about. Obviously, we've already addressed the gazebo and the staging. And through Tamika, she has been reaching out to the applicants who applied for the position of administrative assistant for the Board of Sustenance and Town Administrator. We do have a couple that are still interested with the schedule. And as you all know, the plan for now is to have the two people to serve and fill all the hours of a full work week. That schedule will change fortunately for Tamika as time goes on and we'll adjust accordingly. So we'll be lining up those, those interviews. Actually, we're doing that as we speak. Also, I have been asked to look into the possibility of shuttle buses for the July 4th celebration, which I will be doing. I don't really know how many we would require or where would be staged. I guess it would either be the community center or Glenwood Elementary to shuttle people down to the festivities in the center of town, but I will get prices for those buses and certainly report that. There's also been a lot of questions regarding the flags around town, so I want the board to know that they have been ordered and they will be delivered either tomorrow or Wednesday and will immediately be put up. So I think everybody would be happy with the, certainly the size of the flags.
And through the chair, I want to thank Gary for doing that. That's something that I've been harping on for two years. And I mean, the flags currently on our poles are smaller than the ones that are on the electrical poles, so I really appreciate the fact that those being.
No problem, glad to do it. So I'm just waiting for them and I did reach out to Mr. Buckley and DPW staff. So as soon as they come in, we will be putting them up. Also, I'm sure the board remembers, maybe with the exception of Tom and Sarah, that in 2015, I did submit an article for repaving of the community center parking lot. It was given a very good price at that time. Unfortunately, times have changed and that amount of that article is $15,000. I did reach out to the contractor that gave me that price way back when and we have discussed it. He doesn't want me to stake it out. I've talked to the director up there to see exactly what the size is and how much we can afford because of the price increase. And I have talked to Joe Buckley because he does have a stockpile of millings in the yard at the DPW that we can use some of them because some still belong to the contractor. So we're going to get the, get the measurements and see what we could do to make that happen. So I will keep you posted on that. And oh, I guess the other stuff that you have down here, that's really all I have for now because we've talked about the gazebo and the staging and the festivities, so that's, that's all I have for now.
Just through, through, through the chair.
I heard her voice first.
I was going to say, if I may, for the $15,000 for the parking lot, can you just absolutely confirm with Jean, Dan, that that money is still there? Because I thought at one point it had gotten revoked or reallocated somewhere else for some other work up there and I'm not 100% sure. So just please double, triple check on that. I know that there's some conversation about that, that specific pot of money for a while and I can't ever remember the final outcome of it, so.
Okay, I did see that open article still existing on the expenditure report, but that being said, I will double check with Jean tomorrow.
Okay, as long as you saw that it was.
Okay, okay.
But if you don't mind, just.
Not at all, not at all.
Thank you.
That's the easy part, I'll do that.
So through the chair, that's relating to the same thing. I'm just curious on how many, how many spaces you think that's going to? You were talking about shuttling people. I don't know how much more parking opportunities that's going to create and if that's going to be something we can use.
Only because I haven't done the exact measurement yet or staked it because it does, if you look at the back of the building to the slope where the sewer easement is, it's probably a four-foot rise. So that's going to have to be filled in, which we do have surplus material to do that. But just not doing the exact measurement and knowing how far that money will go, it's kind of hard to answer how many spots, but I would, I would say at least 50.
Okay. I mean, that, I mean, that obviously will be helpful when we're trying to find places for vehicles.
That, that is also not meant to be at this point in time for finished pave. That is meant to be millings compacted, so.
But it's still, it's still space.
Still possible, yes.
When we need, when we need.
I'll have a better number as soon as I take some measurements to stake it.
And especially because we had talked earlier when we had that walk and there was soccer and the roads, the sidewalks were all blocked and everything else. So yeah, there's, there's quite the need there at certain events and stuff, but.
Okay, very good.
No, that's great, thank you.
I was going to say also, just talking about the shuttle for the 4th of July and everything, that there's also Glenwood Road, I mean Glenwood School, right? The elementary school.
Yeah, I mentioned either Community Center or Glenwood Elementary.
Right, but I think there's a lot of parking available at the elementary school. There's less at the community center.
Correct, that's correct.
But just that it's not.
Do you know how many are at the school?
I, legal spots? I don't know, I was going to.
It's like 300.
300 spots there?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot and they park.
I had no idea.
Remember when we had to have the weird town meeting when we all had clickers?
Yeah.
And we were going click, 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 turn about.
Yeah, now that you say that, that's a lot.
They over the maxed on the, they had a program at Glenwood on Friday and there was, parking was out to the street.
Because they never use the lower parts.
Because people don't go in the back or?
Actually, the lower lots were full on.
They were.
Friday afternoon at least, because we always parked on there.
And so then the 300th and 4th of July are probably going to be even bigger than that event, so.
Well, I, I wonder because if, if we could get temporary signs and then maybe think about when, when you're pricing out the shuttle to even maybe make a run through Naqog and Central Tree, that's some parking and it's far enough down.
I think that's where the parade would start. I think they could be a little congested down in that area.
What about 4th of July, is this not where fireworks?
Most people park over there anyway. I mean, people will park at the heights and walk uptown.
Could you park in the field? You've got Rotten Heights.
Yeah, and we've used that before. We've got Rotten Heights, we've got the field as you approach Glenwood Elementary up to the right. So there are places available, it's just a matter of where we can, where the buses can get, really get in and out of effectively.
But I mean, the buses don't, if people have to walk down from a field to a bus on a lot, you know, and I know uptown here, people always park at the heights and walk up. Some people want to watch the fireworks from there. People park at Central Tree and Naqog and walk, so I'm less concerned about that and I would rather see more like distant parking and then chug that way.
Right, yeah, because people are on both sides of the road and they're walking in the road and everything, yeah, so. That's something that probably to talk to Seth and Nick about.
Seth, you and I and Nick are probably have to talk as you all, communicate with me and how we'll set that up.
On a typical year, it's, it's unmanageable, so I can only imagine with that many more people that maybe even stop parking on one side of the street so it's not so, because you are, people are like literally in the street with bumper, bumper cars, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Next are one-day licenses for the, the Rotten Fire Brigade is asking for them for, actually, three dates. June 18, July 3, and August 20. And therefore, Seven Saw's brewing and Lilac Hedge. I made a motion to.
I make a motion for approval, waiving any fees.
Okay.
Roco?
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
Nichols, I?
Whitman, I.
Benoit, I. Not this easy. And we have a request for appropriation of transfer. So I can get somebody to, get somebody to pack it, go ahead and read it.
I'll make a motion that the board transfer $25,000 from account 231-5120, ambulance wages, to account number 231-5200, ambulance purchase services. The excess wages that it's coming from is due to a vacancy. The transfer will cover the shortage, which Chief Knight had spoke about in his update in purchase services, given that they didn't, there was an over-generation of ambulance revenue for which we pay a percentage on the billing side.
Second?
Roco?
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
Nichols, I?
Whitman, I.
Yeah, I, I'd like a motion that we consider additional transfers that were brought to our attention.
There's a second.
Oh, there's a second one that's on the agenda? I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that the board approve $7,500 to be transferred from account 220-5120, fire wages, to account number 220-5850, fire additional equipment. And this is, there's a five-inch hose that has failed pressure testing that needs to be replaced. It's unable to be repaired due to its age.
Second?
Roco?
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
And Nichols, I, it's conditioned that Seth signs it.
Whitman, I.
Benoit, I. You have it here, Seth, if you need.
Now I'd like to make a motion to consider some additional unexpected transfers that were given to the board. If anybody has any objection.
I'll second it, but I don't know what you bet.
Do you want to look at them? These, these came from the treasurer, the, what was the other one? The treasurer, are they all from?
I think they're all from the back.
They were all from the treasurer's office. Insurance.
Insurance supplies, are these them here?
No, I don't have it. No, it was just delivered to the office this afternoon. Just with it.
Right, but I think that he wants to review it first to make sure he wants to.
Got it, got it.
Thank you.
I, I would think that we could postpone it, but with it being so close to the end of the fiscal year, I think we could. And if we, I can have a roll to help, call to add this to the agenda?
Make a motion to add this to our agenda of the year.
No, we already had the motion.
We had the motion.
Oh, second.
You seconded. So Roco?
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
And Nichols, I?
Whitman, I.
Who wants to read them?
They're all there.
The clerk?
The clerk.
The clerk? Well, no, that's the clerk. We've got to, we've got to break him in, what the heck?
You're going to, you're going to make a motion to transfer it, and then just say, to transfer from that and then say this and then say the numbers and how much and then why.
I make a motion to approve fifteen hundred dollars to be transferred from zero-zero, account zero-zero-one dash one-four-five dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, uh, treasury purchased services into account zero-zero-one dash one-four-five dash five-four-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, uh, treasurer's supplies.
Second.
Um, has FinCom seen these yet or not?
They, FinCom has not seen these, so they will have to go to, obviously to FinCom and pay them. We're out of order as far as procedure, but.
Okay. Okay.
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
Nichols, I.
Whitman, I.
Benoit, I.
I make a motion to approve a hundred dollars transferred from account zero-zero-one dash one-six-zero dash five-four-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, machine and paper supplies account to be transferred into account zero-zero-one dash one-six-zero dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero into the machine paper purchased, uh, services.
Motion accept, approve.
Second.
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
Nichols, I.
Whitman, I.
Benoit, I.
I make a motion to approve fifty dollars from account zero-zero-one dash nine-one-four dash five-one-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, health insurance, transferred into account zero-zero-one dash nine-one-five dash five-one-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, life insurance.
Second. I make a motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
Nichols, I.
Whitman, I.
Benoit, I. Thank you. All right. We have talked about the temporary staging already. Um, the next item is request for proposal marijuana cultivation license. Gary, could you?
Yeah, sure. Um, thank you. Uh, in March of twenty-one, the office of the town administrator issued a MRFI, um, slash RFP for marijuana cultivation that was awarded and then no progress was shown on the project. So, on April fourth of twenty-two, the board voted not to extend the host community agreement for mass fruit growers. So, my question to you, the board, is, um, I think my recommendation would be, I don't think, I know my recommendation would be to update the RFP and, and repost, recirculate and see what we get.
Yeah, I think we probably should.
Well, that, that was all we, we said we were going to do. I guess it was officially.
It never, it never happened. We obviously have to change names, dates, times, and so on and so forth. I, I believe everything else would be in order and acceptable as the board has approved this prior, but we should.
So, I make a motion that, um, the board approve the town administrator to proceed with the.
Second.
Um, I, if I may, I have a question. Um, have you had anyone, um, any interest, um, parties reach out asking if it was open or available or would be coming? Or is this, um, a, cause I, I'm fully supportive of it, but just I'm curious if there's already some interest out there or if we need to kind of work on getting, um, the education out that it's posted again.
It's a good question, Leah. I would certainly, um, agree that we should put some information out there and let everybody know that certainly it's available and then go through the proper posting process as was done the first time.
So, you have had some interest?
I have, I, I, nobody's contacted my office regarding this. All I know is it's something that the founders, um, would like to move on.
Right. No, that's fine. I just was curious if there was somebody, you know, a group or anybody knocking at the door for it that, you know, was spurring it or if it was.
Nobody.
And I, I'm not totally familiar with this. What area is this gonna be?
There is no area at this point. It's just, um, we're, a request for, um, proposal, which means that a company would come to us and say, this is what we wanna do.
Okay. So, it's just a license? Okay.
This is where we propose that it gets done. So, it's, it's really squaring on. Um, we have three, if I recall, we've opened it up to, to three.
Okay, alright.
Um, we have two. The last, the third one, uh, fell through the past few months. Um, so this is the third one again, put back into the, um, the pool.
It's gonna be in commercial area though, that's the whole catch.
And if. If, uh, yeah, I was just gonna say if I may, through the chair, I think there's still a process. It still has to clear through the state CCC, Cannabis Control Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
It still needs to go through planning board with, um, make sure it meets all the appropriate zoning and every, so just, um, because someone submits an RFI or an RFP, a, a response to it doesn't mean that they're going to get it, first of all. And second of all, it doesn't mean that just because they were awarded it,
Mm-hmm.
that it actually is a viable project as it moves through the, through the process. So, um, that's kind of the, the backdrop.
So, through the chair, I, I assume that there's gonna be some kind of a open process. So, maybe there's something, we'd start posting something on the website that we're going to be, would be worth putting information out there, that we're going to be considering proposals, just to inform people?
Yeah. If I may.
And do we do that in the past?
I think, yeah, I think yes, in the past. And in the past, I think we've had some, um, groups kind of knocking at the door, wanting to know if we were gonna do it or not.
Yeah.
Um, Gary, do you know, I think usually it's a thirty day term. Is that, um, for, is that?
Yeah, as far as the posting goes?
Yes, as far as the, the RFP or RFI is open for an, a, a defined set of.
You had, exactly. You had it on from, I'll give you the dates, March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one through April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, deadline. So, it was thirty days.
For further discussion, I, I mentioned it to Gary. I would, I, I will agree to have it started again. Um, but I would like to look at the propos, the RFP paperwork. Um, I know that there were a couple of things. There was a committee that met. I wanna make sure that the committee is still intact, um, and see if there's any changes to it.
Okay.
Um, I know that previously the committee was, um, publicized as who was on the committee and I thought that we might wanna keep that quiet, um, just so that somebody couldn't go to a committee member and I, I'm very paranoid, so.
Through the, through the chair, if it's, it's a formal committee, wouldn't it have to be open meeting? So, you would have to.
I don't, I don't, were they open meetings before?
Yeah, I think, I think it would have to be a.
If, if I may, I think the formal committee, the RFP review committee for the marijuana stuff has been, um, internal department heads, um.
Yeah.
So, Seth, correct me, I think you, I'm not sure if you were on it or not, but correct me if I'm wrong. Um, so, it was, uh, it was internal department heads
Yeah.
that would be overseeing, um, any sort of process anyway. And everything that they reviewed was, um, redacted and everything. So, they were legitimately scoring it on project merit and not anything as to who it was and everything.
Okay, great. I wasn't around during that.
So, through, through the chair, did you have to post those meetings, Seth, or you just met as, you did not? Oh, okay.
No, we just met as. Yeah.
So, then it might, if you don't have to post the meetings and they're not.
Yeah, it was just to, to grade and then basically help you make a decision.
Yeah, so just like a, it's a review team, yeah.
Yes, and then you as a board got our grade and you, you know, go from there.
And then we saw the redacted applications also and with the, the review committees grading and comments and everything.
Comments.
And then have conversation as the board as to.
And the, and the reason to, to look at the whole packet again is because I'm not sure if that's the one that I had seen, if there were some copy and paste errors. So, just wanted to check those out correctly. Um, so do I have a motion to allow, or we've already got the motion, sorry.
Did, did you, did you?
Yes, we did. See, I'm, I'll, I'll get it. It'll become second nature.
Okay, so. So, now I guess we can.
Clark, I. Galvin, I.
Roll call. Thank you.
Nichols, I.
Whitman, I.
Benoit, I. Okay.
And Gary, sorry, Gary, if, if I may, I think that all of that stuff from, um, the March twenty-twenty-one was, um,
One.
I know the board, the previous board with, um, I think it was TA Nicholson had worked with KP and everything to go through that process and everything. So, it had already been, um, for legal at least once. So, I'm not sure if you wanna do another quick cursory, just make sure nothing on the state side has changed
Oh, okay, okay, great, okay.
because I know that the CCC is kind of evolving the process, but I don't think it affects our RFP, RFI process, but if you want, just so you know that little bit of the background.
Okay, okay. Okay.
That's from last time.
Yeah, I'm not sure. The poll, the poll thing, does somebody have to sign that? Is that?
The poll. Did we have to sign that? Okay. Okay.
So, do we all sign here?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And we already voted on it and everything.
Right.
Correct.
It's just, okay, thank you. No, it's okay. I just didn't, I, I saw it in the folder and I didn't know what it was.
I know, and I, I forgot that it was in there. I didn't tell you.
The next item was job posting for part-time, um, position, but, yes, I'm sorry, I'm reading you too. Um, Gary already spoke with that, about that.
Is that what Gary's?
That's okay.
Um, and FY twenty-four budget meetings. There's been, um, a lot of talk between the finance committee and even our committee about starting the process earlier. Um, and Gary, you and I chatted about it. Do you?
Well, I, yeah, certainly mentioned that before to the board and also on the department head. So, my hope is then, once everybody's settled into the new fiscal, now after July first, we'll give them a little break. And then I, I think the best thing to do on or about August first is to start the budget process. Um, as, as far as the department head is putting their, their line items together, I, I see, um, next year to be very trying. And I want to make sure that certainly the town knows, the board, as well as the finance and the residents, um, it, it's, it should be a, a need-based budget. And I know that we've, we've heard many people speak about lack of help or lack of supplies, uh, what work can get done and what can't get done. So, I really think that we should start very early and collectively get our budgets together and present to the board and also meet with finance and also the district. We just have to, um, we have to do something. We all know that. So, I think it's very important to put a needs-together budget in place.
And through the chair, I know we had had a lot of discussion, kind of reviewing previous financials, looking at, you know, where shortages were, how funds were used, and do more of a, a thorough analysis of what the, what we've seen in the past as we go forward to use that to, to help us in, in decision-making going forward. So, I, I think we had all talked about that, right? Trying to do a little bit more of a, a review on, on, uh, past, um, financials. So, I don't, I don't know if that's something we would involve Jean in as well. Of course, it's gonna be tough for her to, to do that, but, I mean, for an example, like with the, uh, the fire department running a, a month short and concerns like that, like kind of doing a review and seeing, you know, what kind of things might happen or have happened and those type of things in all the budgets. So, I think we wanted to be a little bit more proactive in looking at, rather than, I mean, we end up being reactive at the end of the year and rushing and trying to, to get these budgets to balance. So, I think we wanted to do a little bit more in-depth analyses of the figures, a little bit up, upfront. Um, so I think what we were talking about, cause we've been talking about it a lot, is to try to put some dates up and start actually doing it so that we don't wait till the last minute. My recommendation maybe would be the alternate Monday because Jean typically works on Mondays. We've done that with the finance committee in the past. So, I don't know if that's what the board would be amenable to. I mean, typically, we expect to meet on Monday, so I don't know if that, you know, typically is a good date for the board, but.
Right, so, so Gary, are you send, sending the request for the departments on August one or you're asking for them by August one?
I'm asking them to begin the process on August first. I don't expect a, a completed budget ready by August first.
Right.
But I would like to start the process and I will certainly, as we have our department head meetings, we'll certainly discuss them and just put a deadline on it.
Mm-hmm.
It's very important, it's just very important to me. And I, and I know it's important to all the departments, department heads, that, that we get this done and, and, and work these problems out well before, like London says, the last minute, the eleventh hour.
Right.
If I, if I may, I was gonna say, I know, and I've been saying for a while, that the town's quickly approaching that ten thousand population mark.
Yeah.
And I know in some cases, specifically for the library for sure, but I think there's other things around town that may trigger additional service, needs for service or whatever. So, I think my hope is that this is a, a true budget for the, what, to service the population of the town now and not just continue to shoestring the budget. I, I mean, obviously, we want it to be fiscally responsible. I'm not arguing that point at all. But we can't continue to just say we're gonna do, you know, we're doing the same amount, we're doing three times the amount of work with the same number of employees and a, a lesser budget because inflation hasn't kept up with the, the, the level funding that the line items have been receiving. So, I think that's the point, you know, I've been pushing for, for sure, is that we know we're not necessarily where we should be in a lot of our departments. And so, what do we need to get there? Not just to kind of fix what we have right now, but we need to, to have some growth also.
You're absolutely right. And, and, and it has to be looked into. Um, even when I was here in a, in a previous life, there's so many subdivisions that were accepted, so many lane miles. As, as everyone knows, there's more, there's more coming over the horizon. Um, you, uh, enterprise funds, um, I, I believe they're offset as far as what they're looking for. But as far as emergency services, police, fire, ambulance, now DPW certainly with all the extra lane miles, materials that are needed, equipment and certainly manpower. So, I think, um, it's something we certainly have to look into deep. So, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, and I think, if I may, we know, we heard from a lot of the department heads, you know, council on aging, uh, this population needs more hours, more support. We've heard from recreation, safe place, they're running a, you know, half million dollar program out of an eighty square foot office. And that's pretty much all the space that they have with the rotating storage tanks. So, there's a real need for additional space to service our entire population. And how that's gonna look, um, I think is a piece of that. And that is a separate, that's not the, I don't think that that's the, um, under the levy budget that we're talking about. But it's a, a consideration that we need also because that's going to look at increased staff hours or increased staffing in, in whatever, which may then result in increased health insurance and, and benefits and everything like that. So.
I think the other piece that this board pays, or I, I, I don't wanna say pays more attention to, because I don't believe that completely. But we spend so much time on what we're spending and not enough time, I don't think, on what we're bringing in. That's a piece of the picture that the board hasn't spent a lot of time on. And, um, I'd like to add that into the whole process. I know there's a line item, but what is involved in that line? What can we, what can we do to increase the revenue to?
Okay.
Cause it's not gonna grow on the trees. Um, thank you for, for getting on that so quickly. So, I, I know it's definitely what we all wanna do.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I, I'd like to try to set some dates to, to start the process or?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, thank you, remind me that because I was gonna say something, but we, we're not gonna look at all the budgets all in one night. We're gonna do it much like the finance committee does. So, I'm wondering if there's, you know, not everybody has to, if you set a September fifteenth deadline, for instance, not everybody would need to necessarily get that in. So, maybe, maybe some of the, uh, s, some of the larger departments
Mm-hmm.
might take a little bit more time than some of the smaller ones so that we can start on, you know, looking at them that way. But yes, definitely. So, I, I would like to maybe wait until Gary has a, has a date that we could start looking at them. And then certainly, I don't know if anybody wants to do another Monday with summer, I'd rather.
Okay, as long, and, yeah, like, through, through the chair, I just wanna make sure we have a plan, cause we, we've talked a lot about it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I wanna make sure we put something in, in place. And, and I personally would recommend starting with police and fire.
Okay.
I know that COVID had a factor in a lot of their budget issues and stuff like that, but that's very concerning, public safety, the shortfalls and that sort of thing. So, I, I'd like to see us start looking at that upfront, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, agreed.
Okay, so, I, do we need to take a vote on that or I think we just gonna?
I think you, you're, you're working with Gary and then you can, you guys will bring it back to us for dates, right?
Just gonna do it. Yep.
It is, yep, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so then to the goals and objectives, anything for the economic development commission? I know, Tom, you were looking to go to one. Did you?
Yes, I, I sent in my letter of interest. I actually went to the last meeting and met with, uh, Mr. Jordan. And it was a great meeting. It's, it's a lot of great ideas. You know, we're at the starting process of, you know, the committee is at a very early starting state right now. But it's, everyone in there was very motivated and we're all trying to look for different, you know, through grants or just funding, like every other department in the world. Everyone's looking for money. So, that's basically what we talked about for about two hours and it was, it was a really good meeting.
And through the chair. So, they were very accepting to, to have a member of the board on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Great. Thank you for doing that.
Good.
Um, the town website I saw that was actually on, I think, the economic development commission. They were looking at, at the website.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it seems like there might be a, a coming back.
Oh, the new website, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
For the, for the, for their own, their own?
A new website or it, they're owned? No, they, I, but they are looking for an updated.
Town website.
Town website, yes, yes, which was similar. They were looking at, um, I think it was Westminster, uh, kind of copying them. They have a really nice site.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Westboro and Shrewsbury also have a pretty heavy, um.
Yeah, there's some really nice ones out there. Very user-friendly. That was the term they kept saying. I mean, our, our site compared to others is, is not user-friendly.
Right, others. Yes.
Especially to a somewhat aging population. They wanna go on and find information, but they can't. They're just online, so.
Okay, um, excellent. That's goo, good to know. Um, whoever spearheads that, if they could be in touch with me?
Absolutely.
Um, cause I've kinda said that the website would be something I would take over. Um, it's not take over, but as, as coming from the, through the eyes of the chair, uh, the select board. So, I'm.
I swear, I turned this thing off.
Boards and commissions, sorry. Um, boards and commissions, I, I don't know that we, we haven't had, I think maybe one person, I think it was for the economic development commission
Guess I don't want.
to come forward. You know, I, I think we still have a number of vacancies. I heard from somebody today that we should be asked. we should be asking people to serve on things and it's like, we don't know who you are, but you know that there are vacancies, but I don't know that people do know that there are vacancies, so somehow, you know, we've put it up on the electronic sign, we talk about it in these meetings, um,
Yeah.
it's, it's.
Is it on the website?
The age group. Yeah, it's, it's on the website.
Yeah, yeah, it's been on the board in a long time, but through the chair, are you still doing it as a bit, one slate, the appointments, are we, are you still working on, putting it all together, Tamika, as one?
Yeah, so it's. That's, yes. Tamika, is there anything we can do?
Yes. Hating people down to get all the information, but.
Yeah. Tamika will find us people.
If you, um, I, I put it up on the drive, so I've been making sure to keep the spreadsheet updated, so you, if you wanna pop in and see, you know, where I'm at so far, I've uploaded any letters that I've gotten so far.
Maybe if we even put a blurb in like the, the, um, council on aging's newlet, newsletter, the library's newsletter, maybe ask them to
We could.
put some kind of an outreach thing in all the different.
So there's, so there's twofold here then, there's, there's, we have vacancies that we need to fill, but we also have, um,
Yes.
everything needs to be reappointed, most everything needs to be reappointed on July first, but.
There's challenges, that, um, I don't know that all of those same people are going to come back with interest.
The challenges.
There's, there's definitely been some crickets, so we might end up with more openings than vacancies than we actually have right now.
Okay.
Right.
Um, I have had a couple of new folks come forward, um, that are interesting, uh, you know, filling vacancies on committees now. Um, I've had some people that have said, no, I'm not gonna continue, um, so, yeah, it's tough.
So I was just thinking too, that just reminds me that the, the town administrator's Facebook page is not been, nothing's been going on with it, so do you all have?
It is Facebook.
I think we have, Harry's flip phone.
So we should talk about who has access to that, what we should do, but this could definitely be something that, that could be on there.
Yes.
Through the chair, could we also try something like with the local businesses that we talked about, the milk room, you know, some of the.
Convenience stores. Have a good night.
A lot of people feel like we better we send, hang out with these local breweries, we all do, I do with my family. Would it be possible to maybe reach out to these businesses? I know the milk room's been great about helping the town with anything.
Yeah.
That might be an opportunity to advertise.
Sure, I think we can get any, any help we can get.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they wouldn't be against it, and.
It's tough, it's hard, it's hard to get the word out and it's hard to get folks to participate in town government.
Right.
And I think that there's a lot of, people just don't understand, you know, what exactly it means to, to serve on a board or commission or what kind of commitment that is.
Yeah.
So, to, if I may, to, Tamika, to your point. One thing that has been coming up a lot more recently is, um, kind of the disconnect that a lot of the boards and commissions feel with us and as well as with each other and not knowing what, how their role fits and everything, and it's something I talked about previously, trying to organize a retreat day for all, for all the boards and commissions, um, and, and use it almost as a goal-setting, um, opportunity. Hmm, the other piece of that was trying to work with the library, um, to do an education piece on town govern, what local government is and doing in, in consultation with that, doing like a boards and commissions fair, where all the different boards and commissions set up and kind of showcase who they are, are they elected, are they appointed, what they do, kind of what the time commitment is and all of that to just get, get the information and the knowledge out. That is, was not, there was not any support for that, um, from staff to, to do that, um, previously. So it's kind of not fallen off my radar, but I haven't been able to pick that up. I had reached out to get some, um, names for people to run, um, like the, the, the kind of boards and commissions group, but funding is a piece of, of that also. So I have that and I can, I will continue to move forward with that a little bit more proactively now that some of the other, um, big three hundred things and everything are coming, you know, winding down in the next couple of weeks. Um, it's not gonna help get us names by July first, unfortunately, but if we can do that education piece, um, kind of the end of the summer or the fall even, um, and, and move forward if there's vacancies and we can look at appointing whenever, um.
But speaking of that, I don't know if we need to wait, cause I'm thinking, why can't we have a couple of the boards, or two or three of the boards and commissions sit at one of the concerts up there with little flyers and little, you know, even a quarter, third sheet.
I mean.
I, I, I don't know if.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great opportunity if people are willing to do it. I think, you know, how many of us, you know, I'm up there almost every week, but I can't the next, you know, and summer is a big vacation time, a lot of the boards and commissions, because they're volunteers, take top, you know, don't have the continual meetings every, every, every week or every month or every other week or whatever over the summer. So I think it's a, a big ask, um, especially without any sort of like collaboration, these guy, you know, I think a lot of them feel like they don't hear from us at all and then we're gonna come in and say, we want this, you know, which is, I think is a big ask, I'm not opposed to it by any means. But, um, I do think that it's.
In, in a minimum then, I would suggest if, if boards and commissions wanted to put something together, I mean, they could start with, I think every one of their webpages has kind of like what they do.
Mm-hmm.
So they could start with that, when they meet, who they are, are there vacancies?
Mm-hmm.
And it's something that, I mean, I don't know how long it would take, even if we did it ourselves, but maybe with a goal in mind of when we have our November town meeting, and that's probably at every town meeting, a list of, you know, vacancies at, at the, at the least, a va- a list of vacancies.
And the concerts are going into the fall, so it's not unfe- you know, infeasible to consider it kind of for a fall. Um, I know also to the updating of the town website and stuff, a lot of these boards and commissions are volunteers, first of all. They have expertise in what they do, but not necessarily in web design or, or updating or local government or anything like that, and they don't have staff support. So, I mean, some of them have Tamika as a secretary, um, some of them have Tamika as a clerk, but a majority of them don't have any staff support and they're just kind of on their own.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it's a lot, uh, uh, an even bigger ask for a lot of those. And I just wanna be mindful that we're not pushing more work on board, you know, that's going to dissuade them from, anyone from wanting to volunteer.
Right.
So, yeah.
Point taken, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any answer.
And even through the chair, maybe even like tying into the three hundredth and historically how we established as a town and the responsibilities and maybe historic society could do some kind of an education on it and then we could talk, you could have some, like you said, some kind of a fair where all the departments would give an overview of what they do and try to get some kind of, you know.
I can reach out to the library, the trustees and library, cause I know Carrie had, was trying to work with Ron to get something going. Um, as far as like a, a, a local government education series, um, and she had a good template from another Massachusetts community that we could kind of, that she was working to kind of transition to Rutland specific. So, um, again, I, just based on schools ending and a lot of vacation and everything, I think it's probably realistically evolving.
A while.
Well, it's gonna take a while to, to organize anyway, but like I said, tying that, it sounds like would tie in well with the three hundredth and wrapping it up towards the end.
Right, if we can get it together, but. Right. Right, right. So I can follow up with the, um, the library trustees and Carrie and, and see what that status is.
Cause just, just as a reminder to anybody listening, I think that we had talked about recording those and it be more of a, a moderator asking questions of a board member or two, um, about what they do and then it would be then available on YouTube or whatnot. And in my mind, I was thinking, could we get somebody, a high school student who is very interested in government or even one of the col-, I mean, we have ten plus colleges in the area, have somebody that's interested, um, from, and I don't know how to get that word out, but I have maybe somebody from there that's interested in government could come and, and spearhead the project. I mean, a lot of people get independent study credit and this would be probably a, a big independent study, um, project, so. Um, but I agree, something like that should wait until the fall. And, you know, you talked about a retreat, but just because we can't get somebody to facilitate it, doesn't mean that we probably shouldn't just get together and have it be informal.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I don't disagree with that.
And I, I wasn't here when, cause I, I recall probably conversations with you, that people from the board were assigned as, um.
Liaisons.
Liaisons with, and that, that went away.
Yeah.
Um, is something that we wanna think about and institute.
The finance committee used to do that as well and then kind of.
And I think last time.
The problem with it was that the liaison was dictating or asking them, meaning Seth or the priest chief or whatever, to do their favor and not do what was best for the town.
Okay.
And I, I didn't experience that piece, but I did experience a frustration of, you know, what was my, what was my role going to a board or commission? And then I would hear their concern, you know, the board and commission's concerns and try to bring it back to the board, but then it just kind of like fizzled or was not as collaborative, you know, as a, as I think it could be. So it was more like not, I wasn't totally opposed to it, but it was more, can we have like a defined set of, of go- goals getting out of this kind of liaisonship versus just.
And there, there are a lot of committees, so it's a lot of commitments for the boards, cause we'd all have several meetings to go to all the time and then.
Yeah.
News. And just floated out there, you know, we have department heads come in, but I wonder if, if there would ever be an interest in having board or commission chairs, they could speak on behalf of them, but they could.
Yeah, yeah, we probably should have some of them come sometime, it'd be nice.
Maybe.
I think especially if I may, um, seven big reports that are making very important decisions in town, such as the planning board, um, the conservation commission. Chairs issuing, yeah, Zoom, issuing permits, things like that, um, and, and those chairs are all very involved and, and that might be a really great idea.
Is that me?
I mean, there are some things that I would know was happening if I did watch a meeting on, on YouTube.
Right, I was gonna say, having Zoom has been an advantage, cause you are able to just connect, I mean, you can just connect on my phone wherever I want and like listen in on a meeting if I wanna.
Through the chair, whether it's fair or not, I know there is somewhat of a public perception in town that a lot of the boards not only work independently, but somewhat against each other. Whether that's fair or not, I don't, I don't know, but that is a perception out there and they think that.
I believe in perceptions, because somebody thinks it, so it's.
Right, you know what I'm saying, and they just. They just don't, there's, there doesn't seem to be a communication. Unless someone's really interested and goes out of their way to, to figure out the information for themselves, you know what I'm saying? There just isn't communication with the town, or with each other, a lot of cases.
And I see you, see, people sound like they, it sounds like we might think, like, like to think about bringing, you know, chairs or representative from boards and commissions in, but we, but you have to be really careful that it's not a decision, it's just information giving, um, and.
I know.
Well, we have somebody that n- sits in ninety percent of all, anyway.
I know.
What do you know?
We'll just, we'll just put her on the agenda and have Tamika give a report.
Tamika talk about.
Every convenient time.
But I, I think it, I think it might help to start communication things again.
That's cool.
And, and there are people up there too that think that the select board are the bosses of this whole town. It's, it's, again, a perception, it's not, not valid, but anyway.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so more discussion on that going forward, I'd love to, to do it human resources, we talked about some hiring, um, and.
If I may, on the, if I may, on the HR side of things, I think, um, Gary, going into annual budget stuff,
Yes.
Carol and I have been working on the wage correction, getting people at least up to a step, a step or where they, steps that they should be or whatever. So, um, I would like to see that, um, information and I have some of it put, to put together already and I'll send it around to department heads to confirm that the numbers are correct, um, and then I'd like to see that commitment made toward, cause it's for the non-union, non-contracted employees.
Right, okay.
Um, to get them kind of where they should be based on, um, their years of service and everything and then go forward.
Where they should be. Okay, great. Okay.
That's gonna have to be, uh, uh, added into the, um, levy budget.
Yes, yes, thank you.
For, for.
Right.
For, ever. Thank you.
Great, all right, unless there's anything else for.
Uh, just one question, the annual, the annual report, do we know the status of getting the actual printed reports in?
Oh, my goodness. Out of sight, out of mind. The annual report, um.
The printed?
The printed, we have to do the printed, so Tamika, could you help me remember to do that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any information on it, but if you need to find it.
No, that's all right, that's all right, I, there's, you and I can talk about it.
So we have, so we just still need to, so we need to get it to the printer, is that what we need to do?
I, I think, s- we could talk about it offline, but I want to, I know that we've been bringing, sending it to a printer for a number of years
Okay.
and I think that it's time to relook at that.
Okay.
To make sure that we're getting the best, best quality and price.
Okay.
So, um, so we could talk about how many, Anita would know too, she, I think she said maybe we'd do fifty now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't even know if we need that many. So, we can talk about further, thank you.
Mm, okay.
Anything else?
Oh, should have adjourned.
Second?
Michael?
Come on, guy. Get over there.
Nichols eye.
Bye-bye.
Yes, that's it.
Thank you.